She only cut her hair. It's cute. Good morning, everybody. You can do the plug there.
No, we, I didn't start.
Okay. I'm sorry. I was having a heart this morning.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome, everybody. Okay, public comment. Anybody? Anything? Hold your peace. Is that good the statement is? Okay, we'll do some math then.
And be at this here.
I have minutes.
Two steps.
Minutes from October 21st and October 15th.
Um, we approved those minutes. They were both sent out. At least we can go.
Probably there are nice stuff too, but. Let's move to that right now.
Once it enters water, except when it's not.
You know, I don't mind. What I don't mind is the wind.
And bad roads.
Yeah. Are you okay?
Oh, yeah.
Second, okay. Yes, moved to second intent. We approve the minutes of October 15th, 2015, and also October 21st, 2015. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. Motion to adjourn. Trudy, your notes must be really long with the recess, recess, recess. We did what we had to do. This is from DNRC. Dear Mrs. Gravely, this letter is in follow-up to the September 19th, 2013 Appeal Resolution Letter issued to Broadwater County by FEMA and DNRC. DNRC staff and DNRC's contract held a conference call meeting with Mr. Sean Higley from Broadwater County on October 2nd, 2013, to review and discuss the appeal resolution letter. At that time, Mr. Higley requested a follow-up letter explaining the resolution process for identified county boundary discrepancies of Broadwater County's preliminary flood insurance rate maps. We recognize the county's interest in resolving this issue prior to issuance of the map. However, because a correction to the common boundary between Broadwater and Gallatin County involves concurrence from both counties and physical revisions to approximately five map panels for both counties, we are unable to resolve this issue during this current mapping process for Broadwater County. This is a process for making corrections to the flood insurance rate maps involved in more than one county. DNRC staff will work with Broadwater and Galloway County to prepare a request to FEMA for the necessary map revisions. Once the request is received by FEMA, it will be processed once funding is available. Please be advised, there are no fees or costs that need to be incurred by the communities to submit the request. Again, DNRC will provide assistance to the communities in order to facilitate the preparation and cement of this request. We appreciate your community's comments and commitments to having the most accurate information available reflected on our flood hazardous map. If you have any questions regarding this matter, please contact Steve Stori, DNRC, or Mr. Sean McNabb of FEMA and give their phone numbers. This is for down at the south end of the county. The river has changed its ways and so it's making a difference in the maps.
See Elaine, Sean will be here this afternoon and I would like to make sure that he sees that letter.
Okay.
Susan Swimley had, Nicole at our request had addressed this to Susan Swimley, and she came back and said that because this is outside of her makeup contract, we didn't want her to pursue that. We would have to pay the legal fees for it. So we can work it out with Sean and save the county some money.
It sounds like, well, it's gonna be a little while before they do anything anyway, isn't it?
It sounds, you know, in listening to him, I mean, it doesn't sound like they're in any hurry.
Money is available to say.
We do have a citizen who put me at Gallatin County taxes right now because he has been put out of Broadwater County and into Gallatin over this. So, you know, that could have a little bit of a ripple.
Yes, it could. Okay. Dear licensee, television station licenses for TV power, low-power TV, TV translators in Class A in Colorado, Minnesota, Montana, North and South Dakota expire April 1st, 2014. You must file an FCC Form 303-S in order to renew your station's license. In that form, TV in Class A stations must certify that all required material has been placed in their public file at the appropriate times. For that reason, TV in Class A licensee should make sure that their online public files is complete. You can inspect, I'm sorry, your public files at, and it gives their website. All stations, except TV translator stations, must also file a broadcast equal opportunity program report, FCC Form 396. Additionally, non-commercial educational TV stations must file an ownership report for non-commercial educational broadcast station, FCC Form 323-E. All forms must be filed by December 1st. The base of forfeiture amount for a late fee license renewal application is $3,000. Wow. And additional forfeiture with a base amount of $4,000 may be assessed if the application is filed after the expiration of the station's current license. You can assess electronic versions of these forms and detailed instructions through CDBS Electronic Filing System, and it gives their website. All forms must be filed electronically. For TV, Class A, LP TV stations, the CDBS Electronic Filing System requires that Form 396 be filed prior to Form 303-S. We provide detailed license renewal information on the video division's website, and it gives theirs. Is my understanding that Mike takes care of that? Mike Conkey?
No, that's the TV board, which is us. And Charlie emailed this week. I forwarded that to both of you. And he said he would take care of the licensing, but we do need to have a TV board meeting coming up and just address a few little issues.
The only part with the translator, we have, that's something we're affected on, I'm assuming.
Well, but we've got that big tower out here on.
Right, that's, I called the translator.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's the only part we're involved on that, right?
Right.
No, no. We're responsible for the FCC licensing, which is what Charlie's talking about and what he's gonna review for us. But we need to make sure to get back together with Charlie so we don't lose those. And if we want, we can appoint another TV board, but that has been the commissioners, at least as long as we've been on the board.
Yeah, but still, we're just dealing with that translator. Otherwise, we wouldn't have anything to do with the TV station other than.
The licenses are separate, Franklin.
Right.
And there's a translator, that's one thing.
Yeah, right, that's what I'm saying.
And then FCC licenses are another. We're responsible for both. As the TV board, that's us.
Okay, this is a complaint on a 911 call. Manhattan, Montana, Broadwater County Commissioners and Sheriff Ludwig. I'm a party, I am the party who made the 911 call on Saturday morning, October 19th, regarding an accident on Dry Hollow Road. My phone shows this call was made at 6:12. After placing 911 call, it was my assumption that this would create a dispatch call to first responders, sheriff's department, and ambulance. I was parked on 131 Dry Hollow Road, waiting for Rusty Riveson to arrive when I saw headlights coming. When the lights did not continue up the road, I proceeded down Dry Hollow Road, found him laying in the road. I got out of my truck and ran to him. He was laying flat on his stomach. I checked to make sure he was breathing. He was breathing, but non-responsive. I made sure that his airway was clear and then called 911. I told the dispatchers that I needed an ambulance on Dry Hollow Road off of Flynn Lake. Then I covered him with a blanket. I then called my father-in-law, Bob Davis, telling him about the accident. He came down to me. He went back home, obtained more blankets. He and I waited and waited with Rusty on the road. As we waited, we found it strange that we could not hear or see sheriff's cars coming from the direction of Townsend. We assumed the sheriff's office is operated and staffed 24/7. The ambulance did arrive 30 or 40 minutes later, but still no sheriff's personnel. I helped load him into the ambulance at the ambulance personnel request. Before I left Townsend in to Great Falls, I had requested friends go out and remove the wreckage. Deputy Gackel called me at 10:10 when I was on my way to the Great Falls Hospital. He called to ask what happened when I told him again to know the whereabouts of the accident invite. He called again, talking to my wife to clarify directions. He was confused about Dry Hollow and Dry Creek Roads. He called a total of four times. Highway patrolman Jason Love called to let me know that he was investigating officer. This was Saturday afternoon. Mr. Gackel did show up with the highway patrol, Mr. Love, later in the morning, making the statement to my mother-in-law, Linda Davis, at her house. He had heard from an outside source about 9 o'clock that there had been an accident on Dry Hollow. His shift began at 7:00 a.m. My understanding is, why is this protocol to dispatch first responder, such as sheriff deputy, to an accident? Why wasn't sheriff's personnel dispatched to the site immediately? Sincerely, Barry McDonald. I'm a little concerned about this letter that, in view of the fact that Barry is still in intensive care and, I mean, that Rusty's still in intensive care in Great Falls. I'm wondering what our liability is. You've worked at the sheriff's office, Franklin. What can you tell us?
Well, I don't know. It took the ambulance 30 or 40 minutes to get there.
Because it takes an ambulance about that long by the time we get the call.
And sometimes it does, but it isn't that far. But anyway, I don't know why it wasn't the dispatcher, the highway patrol, the deputy, right away. According to this, it must not because.
Well, and he says in the letter that he heard about it on the street at 9 o'clock in the morning.
Yeah. So I recall there's, it seemed like a big miscommunication or somewhere. I was gonna talk to Brenda, but she was gone, so I haven't talked to her yet.
Well, and I have no idea of the protocol at the sheriff's office. But a nurse, when they change shifts, they do, they call report and they explain, this patient is doing this and here's what we're doing. Doesn't the sheriff's office do that to let the next crew know what's going on?
Basically do, yeah. At that time, the rest of their, the only thing I can think of, there must have been a lapse between the two, one going off, the other coming on. But even so, the dispatcher is the ones going off. He should have went, even though he maybe been in overtime, whatever, responded. And then the next one, when he comes on, he relieved him and take over. So I don't know where, until I get to talk to Brenda, what the miscommunication was, but it sounds to me like no one was notified.
Well, and it sounds to me like Deputy Gackel never did get notified by dispatch.
Yeah, according to the letter, it sounds like, yeah.
Says that he was, he heard it on the street about the accident.
I think one thing that needs to be remembered is kind of what Ann was alluding to is our ambulance crews, our EMTs are volunteers. That means they're called from home, from wherever they're at, they come to the ambulance and then they take off to get to where they're going. 30 minutes is probably not right. Because of that makeup, we don't have someone on staff who's ready to go in seconds, no, they're volunteers.
Well, and usually, I think if there's a fire, or an accident, or some disaster, shall we say, a deputy usually comes. Is that correct?
Well, normally, they do, yeah. Because we don't know what all took place. But I heard once the call was just for an ambulance. But I don't know. I haven't, actually, I haven't gotten to talk with Brenda yet on it either. But there should have been. There was a lapse somewhere in the communication. And I'm sure that they'll go back on the recording and find out just what it was, you know. It's kind of hard to speculate to do that.
I think we better follow up on this and find out what's going on.
Exactly. I knew she was going to, but I knew she was gone, so I didn't.
Well, and I could see, my understanding, Rusty's still in Great Falls and in intensive care.
Yeah.
And if something happens, God forbid, where's our liability? Sharon, come on up. Time for you, my dear. Okay, well, let's have a look for each of you.
Thank you.
A new and refreshed copy.
Thank you.
Okay, background on this is with Goose Bay closing, this is about the docks that Jerry Reller has for sale as a result of the closure of Goose Bay. And we are in the process of getting most of the south end traffic that has been resident at Goose Bay for like 30 or 40 years. The docks are part of Jerry's property and they are no, the VOR will store them, but they are for sale. The first part of the saga was that the auction that Jerry had, he was gonna try to auction off the docks. Two of them supposedly sold, one of them didn't. What I am looking to do is to secure those stocks to be put in at Broadwater Bay to supply more docks for the traffic that's been created by the Goose Bay closure, basically. I don't know, I don't think that the VOR in their new facilities currently have plans for docks. And if they do, the critical part is the docks will probably be subject to the 14-day limit, which means there'll be no seasonal docks. So what you have here is not really an actionable need from you, except right at the end. This is the proposal that I gave to the trust board on October 16th, when I thought there was only one dock left, because Jerry had told me two of them were probably sold to somebody other than Fort Peck. Then after the meeting, I found out that indeed, the gentleman had not come through, and so all the docks were available. So what I did was go back in and amend it to the trust board to the three-dock proposal. What it, and I presented it to them, and I think favorably, what they had asked was that, what I asked them for was funding in addition to whatever, and that we still have to figure out, because it went from $25,000 to $81,000, once we add the other two docks, starting with one at $18,000 and going to the others at a total of 81, including what I think will be infrastructure. What they had asked was that when these terms on the dock grant proposal were accepted or put into action, then we needed the commissioners essentially to accept ownership of them. Because to the best of my knowledge, the trust board doesn't own things, they just nicely give money out. So what they wanted to see was to proceed in their process, they wanted to know the commissioners would, if they bought the docks, would put this whole thing together, accept ownership as we have right now down at the bay. Now, there's no different than it is. The repair and maintenance, the sinking fund, which we have created, would take care of the new docks. Part of the revenue would go for putting the docks in, for maintaining them, for their feeding, so to speak, because there'll be more maintenance. There'll be from, we currently have 32 now, and that would make a total of 81. So, but again, all that would be part of a similar memorandum of understanding that we have with us now for the maintenance of those docks. So essentially, the question here is, what I'm asking for is if we can put this together with the trust board, will the commissioners, the county, accept ownership of the docks? I think that's.
Are some of them seasonal now?
Yes.
At your place?
Yes.
And will some of these be seasonal?
Yes. Right now, we have 32 docks. Each year, and the history is in the presentation there. Each year, and I think I can bin before you in sort of my yearly updates, each year, the docks, from the beginning, have become more and more popular. And so what I've done for those that have seasonal docks, I've offered those docks to them again for the next year, because they were the ones that supported us when everybody was in a wait-and-see attitude and we didn't rent any for the first year. So right now, as of next year, all of them are rented.
All 31.
All 31. There is in here a list already of 13 people, their names and phone numbers, that are on a waiting list for this year. So the need is there. The need would have been there for the one dock of 16, and then the two more sets of docks at 20. So basically, we're adding, proposing to add 54 docks. I don't think all of those would go seasonal, but I don't know. With that many, I would probably hold a large bank out for in-and-outs, at least 20. For organizations like, oh, the walleye clubs, the people that put on events there, the Catch Fever, the, we have about four or five events every year that are volunteer events that have to do with fishing, put on by, all the way from the cancer camps to the kids, you know, Catch Fever. So some of those then could be allocated to that. But yes, we have, there is a demand for them, and as the season gets closer, there are more and more people asking me about docks. So the need is there. And I think most, as I've looked at it, two things. I was talking to Roger Troliger this morning about the, he's the president of the Gallatin Madison County Walleye Club. He's actually also the, now the current president of all the tournaments in the state. And part of the problem we have down there with the impact of the Goose Bay area being closed is all the south end fishermen are ending up at our end. And what's happening is the impact of an increasing amount of fishermen on loading and unloading. That bay is becoming more and more jammed. And I feel like we've had some issues, you know, late afternoon, hot sun, people trying to hurry. At least the docks, if there were more, it would offload a little of that traffic. If people had their own docks, they wouldn't be loading and unloading. And that was something he and I were talking about. Also, as far as adding more docks, I think as far as the economy is concerned, more people believe their boats down there mean they're gonna come more often. I had one lady say to me, and her name is on here, she said, Sharon, if I had my boat, if I had slipped down there, I'd come every weekend or every other weekday. As it was last season, they came three times. And they're on the waiting list now. But the people, if their boat is there, they're gonna come to where their recreation is. So, and if people come to where their recreation is, then of course, they're going to come here, they're gonna shop here, they're gonna go to Bob's, they're gonna go to every place in town, because it will become more of a weekend retreat rather than just a once-in-awhile thing. So I think the effect on the economy of having more docks is good. Plus, it fulfills a need, because there aren't any docks left at Kim's, except I think sporadic. There are no docks left at Yacht Basin. And most of the people that come down here don't want to be at that end anyway, just because their philosophy is different. They're more peacefully fishing up here. That's a more recreational end with a different set of play toys than this here.
How would you propose to move these docks?
Float them. Literally. You, from, actually, there's a couple of people in our neighborhood up there. One has done this before, he owned a marina for 20 years. And I've talked to Jerry Reller. He brought three of the older docks that we're not even looking at. He brought it from Kim's about 10 years ago. And basically, what you do is you get volunteers, which I do have, to push, pull, tug, organize. But you float them out. And then you float them in. And then we're going to, I've talked to Jerry about his way of securing them. Right now, what his system is, and I think that will work, is he, what he does is, there's oil drums that will sit in on each end. Then there's a block and tackle system to raise and lower them, because that is one thing that will take some amount of maintenance. Because we maintain the docks anyway. In other words, the docks that, the convenience dock and the loading docks, as the water comes up and down, we pull and push those docks. Boy, when the water is on the move, sometimes twice a day, we'll be down there pulling and pushing those docks.
Really?
The water can come up four to five inches in a day. And to make it safe and convenient for the boaters, we've got to be pulling those docks, because if the water's up, you know, the metal docks and the docks are in the water, it doesn't work so much at all. So we are constantly pulling those docks, which means also, there'll be some maintenance as far as, because as the water comes up, based on the system of cement, we'll have to also raise and lower the docks. Jerry has a block and tackle pulley system, which he is also gonna throw in. So the total, it's three docks, one 90 by 20 is gas dock, and then the block and tackle. Basically, I think if we, it changed from one dock to you get, you take three, you get everything that's involved with the docks. Plus, his expertise on how he did it and how he capable of doing it. They seem to be, I've got pictures in there, and I went over and looked at them. Two of them have, they're about three to five years old. Two of them have surface walkway, which is aggregate, like big patio, like these is aggregate 18 by 18 square meters. And the other one is wood. And they've got a good lives, probably 15 to 20 years on them. So I think they, and again, this is a trust board grant, so I'm not asking for money. But to assure you that you would get a good piece of equipment, maintainable and sustainable.
Are we gonna have enough previous odds down there with this in mind? Are we going to have enough picnic spots down there with this in mind?
Well, generally, the picnic or camping site.
Either.
The boaters are not necessarily connected directly with a picnic, because to get a boat slip, you have to reserve it, you can't just come in and use it. So these are reserved slips. So it won't be that, although we do have issues with that, it won't be that people just come in, park for four hours, take their picnic basket and go out for picnic. So it's not, they're not directly related. For the most part, I would like to see a picnic area, but that's another subject, which I'll come back to on a later date.
Yeah.
It would be nice to increase that because as we increase the facilities, it does exponentially create more traffic. This year, going back to what I talked about before, the gazebos were full almost all year. I think there was probably two or three times when there was one available, and this is all summer. So, and that's great. I mean, that means that people are using them, and it's been a lot more populated than it was even when we started three or four years ago. I go back to looking at the gazebos, and there'd be like two rented a month maybe for a couple of days, and now they're trying, they can't reserve until in February, but people are already trying to reserve for the next year, so. So the picnic spots, they're related, but they're not related. I, yeah, we'll come back on that subject, how to create more picnic spots at another meeting. But what it will do is, I think it will draw more people on a weekend or on every other weekend basis to the area because they have gotten this drill. At this point, you've got thirty to forty years worth of people that were at Goose Bay who are now pretty much stranded out there. And I know I have several at the KOA, but again, with the fourteen-day limit, the, these are people that were spending their entire summer since they were, our kids are growing up there. So these are the people that are looking for places to go, at least for their boats. And whether or not, they won't be able to stay at the BOR because of the fourteen-day, but they're still out there, and they still need a place to go, and they still need a place to put their boat.
Questions, Laura?
No, my, my questions have pretty much been answered by what you've been saying. One of the things that's attractive is the partnership between Jerry Reller and yourself and Broadwater Bay. The other one is, there is a need out there, and that's one of the complaints that people have had over the closing of Goose Bay is, where do we go now? So if we can look at addressing the concerns and the issues that'll come with that next year, before we're hit with that next year, I think it'll just keep everybody a whole lot happier and be more beneficial for the community.
Well, my goal, if we can get all this done, is to have them in as soon as we can get water in April. It's too late now unless we just slide them over the ice, but by the time the trust board, when we finish the negotiations with Jerry and with, because basically, it's a simple bill of sale. I mean, if they do it, then they take it up with him, it's like buying a whatever. So their negotiations, my goal was to bring the idea to them, to put it together, and then if they say yes, and we get it all put together, get enough volunteers to move all those little things over.
How long will it take to move them over?
I don't know. I have no idea. I have to want to go.
And that's a fair answer.
I don't. I, I have no idea. And I don't know whether we, I'm guessing we'd probably bring them over. Jerry said that when he brought his over, and I think they were, you know, the ones up at, at Kim's, about how big those were, about the same things, they were wooden. I think he said they got caught by a wind, and so they either had to pull off, and it took them a twenty-four-hour period. So they can all be separated. They, in other words, even though if you look at the picture there, they have, they come in segments. So if necessary, we can unball them. I prefer not to. I prefer to find a nice, calm day, a whole lot of volunteers, and then somebody who knows what they're doing. And I do have somebody in the neighborhood, I forget Jack's name, but he works, he used to, he's retired parking recreation, but he owned a marina, and he has moved docks. And he was the one that pointed out, interestingly enough, I was assuming that you just pull them with ropes. He was the one that said, "No, Sharon, what you do is you push them." And when you think about it, tugboats, they don't pull, they push. He said he powered it, pushing itself. He said that he would help organize, help out volunteers.
He would be a godsend.
I know. I also have a guy that walked in and said, we were, I don't know, we were talking about cables, because he's good at air-flying cables, but bigger, like cables, to hold these things down. And he volunteered that he was a scuba diver. And he said, "I'll come back and help you, I'll volunteer my time," because you've got to have somebody to move out and detach those things. So as you talk about it, people are excited about the prospect, and I don't think volunteers will, will be a, will be an issue. But I don't know why volunteers, I hope we'll take a couple of days.
You just have to wait and see.
I know. When we get out there, I guess we'll know, won't we? But I know where there's a will, there's a way. And those docks, they're only four miles that way. And I'll come see, I'm sure we can get them over, and it'll be a great YouTube moment.
Franklin, questions, concerns?
No. I was talking to Steve McCullough, and on another, and he talked about this then too. And he said he left a, a letter here with the commissioners last week, but I didn't, I checked it out, and I didn't have anything. But anyway, I think everything through it should go, other than the way I understood it, the trust board's meeting here, well, I guess about, it'll be this month now. And I think they wanted to, he wanted to wait till after that meeting.
I have a copy of what they have, or a, and I can, I have this on my computer. What, what this is, is, and I want, actually, I wanted to talk to Steve, and I just got a text saying that he's in Honey Camp with the Sun. So that's, I guess, why he's not here. What this is, Franklin, is just, I had proposed, this is a response to my proposal. And it was just on how to allocate the money. In other words, what they're looking for is matching funds.
But apparently, before they're going to make it, they want to have this meeting, this will be all taken
Right.
in their trust board meeting.
Right, right. Now, he said in his text that the meeting is mid-November, which is earlier, I think than, and it isn't really, actually, their next meeting is in January, but he said in the text, he said, Honey Camp meeting in mid-November. So I guess they'll address it then. And what I'm going to do between now and then is to address the issues on there. In fact, I talked to Roger this morning, and I'm going to make a presentation to Walleyes for money from them.
Ah, very good.
And I thought I might, because they, they need twenty-one thousand in matching funds. Now, I've got some to volunteer, because it's going to take quite a bit of volunteer. I'm going to go to Walleyes and see how much money, because some of that is not exactly as they indicated right there. So when I can talk to Steve to clarify some of those things, I guess when he gets back.
I had a call from a person, Walleye, and he was, he wants support on this here.
Well, I think it's a good thing for everybody, just to bring people in, and...
I guess back, of course, have we, are we liable, or have we got insurance or anything on those docks that are now? Have we got the liability? Do we have it at any time?
Yep, they are county property, so we do have insurance on them. I did try to find out what it is for those, but I, it's, it's a little bit quicker process or more lengthy process, so I don't have an answer yet. And, and I did put the letter from Steve in your individual mailboxes, I happen to be here, but he stopped by with that. But as that is more a trust board issue, I didn't put it in the commissioner's mail because I don't think we want to be micromanaging the trust board.
Well, no, but I did, I picked up everything that's in there this morning. But anyway, that letter...
You have stuff, when it gets overpacked, you have stuff that kind of falls behind, you might look back there.
Well, it wasn't overpacked, only had some screwed in, but anyway. Well, actually, basically, they want to have their meeting and, actually, the final decisions are going to be made then.
Exactly. And I think what they want, it's always which comes first, the chicken or the egg. And so I went to them, and then they said, all things being equal, if the commissioners say yes, we will accept responsibility, then it's going to go back, and they'll know that, that you all will accept responsibility, therefore, that, that I think they can go on and make their final, vital determination, as long as I come up with some, hopefully, other funds and...
If that part's under the insurance of you, so adding this on there, right?
That would be a cost, and, and it would be wrapped up in the entire insurance package, so...
Oh, the county insurance, yeah, so I mean, so it'd be just additional, we've got this part in there now.
Exactly, yeah, so it's just adding a little bit to it. And again, I don't know what that number is at this time. Hopefully, we'll have it by next week. But everything the county owns is under our insurance.
Where are these people on the waiting list from?
Uh, let me see. Actually, most of them, looking at the phone numbers, almost all of them are, Jerry is a two-six-six number, almost all of them are Belgrade, Whitehall, Bozeman, a couple from Holland. Almost all of them are, are out of this area. So it would bring, in fact, I've got one from, Ryan is a schoolteacher from Wyoming, he's coming up here for the summer.
Really?
Yeah. So they're, they're from all over, and that's just the ones that have basically said, "I'm ready to write a check, and I've said, I can't take the money until I have someplace to put you in. This is what's out in the future." But there are more. I mean, that, that just, they are ones that are, these are ones that have actually committed and have a name somewhere.
Well, and I see a three-oh-seven number, too.
That's the Walleye number, I think.
Where's three-oh-five?
I don't know. Where's three-oh-five? Well, of course, people don't change their cell numbers these days, so. I mean, it could be local.
Right.
But these are mostly not people from Broadwater County. These are people from out of the area, which will make an effort to be here, and will be here because they have a space to go.
The other thing is, if they're coming here from out of town, shall we say, or even out of state, they're going to come, and they're going to buy groceries, they're going to buy gasoline.
They're going to eat out, they're going to drink out, they're going to do all the things that keep them here. One, what I have found is, once they have their center of recreation here, then they will gravitate around that, whether it be a boat slip, whether it be a campsite, whether it be a lot at Silo's or whatever. Once they get used to coming here, then they begin to shop, and the surplus of economic benefits continues. So, yeah, they're low.
Kim, against my better judgment, I will take your question.
My question, ma'am, Chair, is, is the, the federal management, the Parks and Recreation Board's been participating in this process, and they do have funding in that account or that fund. And we did run into a situation once earlier where we wanted to try and make sure that if we're going to have Parks and Recreation Board, they're going to be involved in these county projects because that's their design and purpose. And I haven't heard any discussion regarding whether they have had any involvement in this and/or part of that discussion. So if they haven't, then they should be, and if they have, thank you.
Thanks. Okay. I would entertain a motion, Tim.
Good.
Okay.
Real quick.
All right. Very quick.
Is there, because everything is drawing from Goose Bay?
Most. Most, yeah.
And isn't VOR going to rebuild or re-put a whole new site in there? Or that draw from back when that does happen, or is there any thought on that, or?
Probably, probably not. They're not sure. I've talked to VOR about this, because I talked to them about the docks. I don't know whether or not they're going to build docks or not. It's going to be two to three years, no matter what. But the federal rules say there is a fourteen-day limit. So they are not projecting right now, but who knows, who knows when it comes. But the federal rules say a fourteen-day limit, which means that on any piece of their land, nobody can stay more than fourteen days. So that pretty much precludes seasonal use of the docks, which means that if somebody wants their dock for the entire season, then it's going to be at our end rather than at the Goose Bay end. Now, I mean, it could change tomorrow, but I know that our, that is the federal regulation all over, well, all over the state, all over the United States, is the fourteen-day limit.
Because I've...
And that's a valid question.
Because I did some work out there, and from what I gathered through what I've heard, was that they were going to pretty much put back in what exists to where they actually had full-time, year-round trailers, year-round, that they were going to just, I guess, modernize or upgrade the existing facility they have.
Well, that I don't know. I know that there pretty much are no existing facilities right now because they ripped everything up.
Oh, yeah, correct right now.
But they, you're right, they were going to put in some sort of Forest Service cabin things, and campsites with water and electric. I guess the question is, is the duration of those, whether or not, whether the, whether the fourteen-day limit, if it's extended to that, then it's going to ensure an ebb and flow of their population there. So I, I don't know. I mean, I can't speak to that, and I'm certainly not telling, telling anyone. But in that two to two-and-a-half-year period, we still have a chance to attract people and house them boat-wise. I mean, whether or not we need fifty-two docks, I think eventually, they'll all be used. I think Kim's has, Lord, they must have, does anyone know, a hundred and fifty?
No, I don't know.
Many, many, many. And you haven't been able to get a dock there for years.
No.
So I think that even though they may not be full the first year or the second year, I think it'll be like the docks we have now, that it will build up. And I'm sorry, I can't answer the question, but I have talked to the VOR, and it's probably going to be two years, two-and-a-half years before they're done. And I'm sure it's going to be a nice facility. But I guess it's now an impact of what we're seeing at our end that I'm trying to deal with now, or hope to deal with.
Your board members?
It's a pleasure.
Due to the interest of the public safety element that Sharon talked about, the partnership with the Parks and Rep Board that is in the works, the partnership with Jerry Reller, and the positive economic benefits to our community, I hope that we would accept ownership of these three docks to go with the dock we already own at Broadwater Bay.
Yeah, sounds good. Actually, all we're doing is kind of accepting until the trust board has their meeting and does what they...
Right. But so it can go back and...
Yeah, I'm sure this will go with the trust board. I mean, at this point, we're not superseding that many.
No, no.
This is a requirement they have.
Right.
Very meaningful, trust board. Yes, we move to the second end then, that we accept responsibility for the docks. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Propose the same. Well, Sharon, thanks. And good luck. Are you going to have to have two Flamingo trailers out there for lunch?
Yes, and the pumpkin juice.
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much, Sharon. Tyler, Mia, come on down. Good morning.
Good morning.
Hello? How are you guys?
Good.
Maybe just to kick this off, we have a, we're working with existing architects, CTA, right now, just to kind of, you know, we talked about the eight-hundred thousand dollars of electrical mechanical that probably will need to be drilled down and improved, but we don't have an expert professional opinion in that regard. So CTA was pulled together for a number of reasons. They, I have their facilities in the state. They understand the overall application and evaluation that's required.
the state, they understand the overall application and evaluation that's required by the state agencies to go forward and ask for additional grants or loans. And so, we had an initial grant given through us with some, with $3,000 matching fund from the hospital, from the hospital association, but we were able to, I think, come across another $15,000 total for this grant, for this planning process. Mia is the consummate grant writer, so we've asked her to pull this together, and within the next, actually, I think, within the next 30 days, we wanted another $15,000 to complete this, this planning process. What we're going to have them look at is, you know, mechanical, electrical, one of the things I think is evidence is, is over the years, this particular model that we have here has been just under and way under sometimes, providing enough dollars to be self-sufficient. When I say just under, I think that one year there was a net income with donations, and many years after that's been maybe $50,000 to $100,000, $150,000 lost. What we're trying to do is, is try to take a look at what other services we can offer the people here, in order to make it self-sufficient. It's not going to happen overnight, I think we've always said that, you know, over this year, we probably need as much help this fall as we did last fall, although our financial, overall financials are better. So anyhow, to get the long and short of it, we're asking for the commission to consider endorsing the grant process that could lead us to an opportunity to have grant dollars given to us up to $400,000 per grant, per government entity. And so, it would have to be matched in some ways from our hospital, we think we can meet those matches, but it's economic development, community development, two separate entities. So, we'd like Mia to help us complete the grant, she's got some details that she can drill down for you. It's, at this point, no dollars, just an endorsement to get the grant approved and in place, and then we need to come back for a grant of up to $400,000 per government entity. That's a kind of a thumbnail sketch summary of what we're prepared, Mia, to drill down a little deeper if you'd like.
Oh, Mia. Hi. This is, I'm going to back up a little bit, the Montana Department of Commerce, and I think I gave, sent you guys a link for this, offers funding to counties and cities, it's CDVG money, and they have two pots of money, one's just CDVG, community development, block grants, the other is the same, but it's for economic development, so they call it the E D. And there's two pots of money that only counties and cities can apply for. You guys actually applied for one I know of, for your CIP, your Capital Improvements Plan. And because of that, I know you guys understand, that without a CIP or without some type of booklet showing what's going on in the county, what your finances are, where you're headed, nobody will give you money, because they want to know that you have a plan in place. So, the hospital is trying to pull together a plan in place, and it'll be a combination plan, so it'll be a P A R, which is required when you go to get money, that's a preliminary architectural review, you have to have that. You also have to have a CIP, a Capital Improvements Plan. And they also want to see, and this was something Kyle actually threw in, which is a good idea, a scope of work review, which kind of goes, okay, this is the hospital's structure, how can we make it so that it's viable, so that it continues to increase revenue, increase jobs, and not be so, what would be the word?
Vulnerable.
Vulnerable, so that it will become more stable. So, I actually printed out the websites for you, because I don't know, I know you applied for a planning grant, they offer a planning grant, it's up to $25,000, and you have to match that. They also offer two pots of money, or $400,000, that you also have to match, which is why a lot of counties and cities don't apply for, because they go, where are we going to get $400,000? So, a lot of season counties don't. And the money just gets, keeps getting distributed to whoever does apply, and they feel their criteria is met, and it's at their list of things they want to fund. I don't know, has the county ever applied for one of their larger grants, or have you only applied for planning grants? Not that I'm aware of, but I don't know.
Just the planning grants.
Which is good, because you can't apply for yours. This is the one thing I want everybody to understand, because I'm a detail person. When, what the hospital wants to do is, they want to apply for the planning grant, they don't want to apply for the whole 25, they only want to apply for 15. But, anytime some other entity wants to try to get help through that money, they have to come through either county or city. And then you basically say, we would like to see this happen, and you sign off on it. And it basically has to come in through county. The hospital already has, the 15,000 met, because we wrote a grant to the Montana Hospital Association. So, we're trying to get another 15, so we can do a viable plan, something that can be utilized to help the hospital on the road, and also help with the funding. Not just CDVG, but other places aren't going to give you money if they don't see what you have in mind.
Are these 50/50 grants?
They are. Yeah, everything's a dollar for a dollar, is the way they put it.
Just in preliminary discussions with both agencies, community and economic development, there's been enough happening, enough giving, and also enough job creation, that they're very interested, and think we can probably meet the shared requirements. But, we just need this planning grant completed, and then we can drill down a little deeper and see if there's dollars that will fit in some of the outcomes that we have from this planning grant.
And what I've done is, I've put this together for you. I put, I started the planning grant, because Kyle said start it, yeah, so that it could be built, so that if it was approved, we could get it in. The way these work is, for a $25,000 grant from either institution, there's actually two institutions that can give you that same amount, the CDVG regular and the CDV ED. Once we ask for one and you say it's okay, you can't apply for another planning grant until the next calendar year, which is coming up quickly, so that would happen relatively quickly, and this planning grant has to be finished. So, it means you couldn't apply for another one until this one was done.
We hope to have it done by December, so that won't bind you for the next year.
And they've already started it because of the other planning that they have. Then, if this works out, and there's a possibility of applying for some of the other funding, that would be something that you would have to discuss with whether or not the county wants to allow that money to be asked for through you for the hospital, but the first step is just this planning grant, and that's all we're talking about today, is the planning grant. But I think Kyle wanted to plant the seed of, would the county consider letting the hospital, if he could come up with a match, which I think will fall on my shoulders for more grant writing, to be able to apply for that.
My nice part about this is, contributions back 18 months can be applied toward this match, plus the creation of jobs that we see happening can be applied for this. So, I'm pretty sure that we can bears by and validate the match, one way or another, and so, I think it is good notice that if we can get this planning grant all completed, get it done by end of December, that we'll probably be back with some real hard numbers of what we would anticipate a growth project would look like. Whether it be, whether it be increasing the imaging department, expanding our long-term care continuum, lots of things that we can look at that will help us provide more stability overall, over the long haul.
So, what I hand you is, this is the application that's kind of started, we're not filing it, it takes your approval, but it's started. You'll see things in yellow, those are the things that have been written to fill it in, they require all kinds of addendums and attachments, and not all those are there yet, because there's still things that have to come up. Some of it's out of your capital improvement plan, because you show in there that the hospital, when the CIP was done, the group showed that the hospital is an important entity to the public. So, I basically wanted to give you a copy, so you could read through it, talk about it, and decide whether or not this is something that we want to do in the hospital.
Well, we're hopeful that you have this application completed by...
As soon as possible, because they have funding right now, doesn't mean somebody might swoop in and say, we want that for our funding grant, but they have some money left in this fiscal year, which ends on the 31st. So, if we can fill it out and get it in, she, some of that CDVG, indicated that they could probably push it through and get it through relatively quickly, for the $15,000.
You're not asking us for money.
No.
You're only asking to lock up our ability to go after another CDVG grant for a couple of months, January, if it's finished in December, even if it goes longer, it's still a couple of months. And this commission has been pro-hospital for a very, very long time, so I don't know that we need to wait. Again, you're not asking us for any money, you're asking for support.
Correct. But it is actually filed by you, you're the filing entity, so it still sits, we're behind you, but you're still in the front. We have the money, and there's a copy of a letter in the attachments that shows the MHA funding that they provided for us.
That's allowed us to get started already. In fact, CTA will be here, architects will be here Wednesday, go through each department and evaluate potential needs that each department has, and begin accumulating that whole process. That was done by a previous...
You're doing all the work, you're doing all the work, we're not doing any of this work.
Correct.
No, no, I'm writing the grant. This is what I do at 6:00 AM in my...
We said it, it's coming from us, but...
No, but you have to sign off, so, no, the hospital's got me writing the grant, we'll do all of that, but it's still, you are still the filing entity. So, at the end, it'll probably write a letter that says, here's a copy of the report, and submit it from you, if that makes, because you are the filing entity still. But, it's all indicated in there that, no, and...
I think, just so you know, we're running almost full on a daily basis at the hospital. We're up to around 55 to 60 full-time employees now, and so, I mean, it's a, and if you, if you consider part-time employees, we're bumping into 90, 95 employees. So, it's, it's a, it's a going energizer button for this department, for this county, and this will help us better pinpoint what new services could be provided to encourage stability, and also take a look at efficiencies that we need to implement here in the facilities as well.
So, this would cover like MRIs, CAT scans, things like that?
Yes. Take a hard look at those.
Now, this grant, this in-kind, you kind of mentioned that a little bit, something about the jobs, or, how much of this could work in on the, for the in-kind?
What we'll have to determine through the grant is...
Actually, there is no in-kind in the grant, I'm not going to be wrong.
You're right.
There's no in-kind in the grant, but the grant, this, one of the grants that's under E D, economic development, they want to see, and they're not going to give you any funding unless what you do is going to increase jobs in a community, that would be like the $400,000 grant, doesn't have anything to do with the, this one, which would be, yeah, they want to see that you're not, I mean, one of the things that they do want to see is that you're helping with economic development, which the planning process would, because it's going to tell you how to stabilize the hospital, hold on to jobs, perhaps create some jobs.
So, you're right on, you're right on, the grant is the grant. If we come back for a long, for a eight grant for the $400,000, that's where we have to justify potential new jobs, retaining old jobs, and...
And I think it's 16, you've got to create 16 jobs, or retain 16 jobs.
For that amount of money.
For that. And that funding works the same way that this funding works. If you help the hospital with that, and it's something they got filed for, then that money's tied, you can't apply until that, that project is complete.
So, by the time that this plan is done, we want to be able to hit the ground running, so you're free up for the next potential.
And then writing grants, without a capital improvement plan, without information on what it does economically, you can't, you can't get funding.
You could writing grants for a long time.
I have. Very successfully, I might have.
You've started writing pretty hard, yeah.
But I, I just want to be sure that you had the websites, so that you can look at those too, so that you know what's out there, because that one is available. It's actually a very nice, it is only available, I should point this out to you, to counties and cities with populations of less than 50,000. So, it's not every county in Montana that can apply.
Where do they get the money for it from?
I think it comes down from the federal government, but I'm not positive, I've never gone.
It's a state-run organization, my guess is, it's probably a mix, probably back to matching, between state, federal dollars.
So, I don't know, out of the 50, what do we have, 56 counties in Montana? I don't know how many of those have a population of over 50, or under 50, who could actually apply. It's been a real lot of great fall fillings, council, county area, yeah.
So, in summary, we would like your permission to go forward and your support, and encourage us to get this done.
With the interest of, yeah, I move that we go ahead and support and be the lead agency on this planning grant proposal.
Thank you.
I'll go ahead and make your application, but I think this is part, I just want to ask a question, blanks, it says, now here, the whole blank says Kyle's notes of architectural contacts.
Yeah, he hasn't got to be that yet.
And it's the budget sheets from the hospital and or the county.
And I don't think I need the county, I think I can get those from the hospital, they just want to know that you need the money.
Letter of support from Brian Overt.
And Brian Overt has to apply, and you should know that too, in case you ever apply, the entity that oversees economic development for your county has to okay the submittal of this. So, that's why his name's on there, it's actually because he's part of the economic development for your county.
And the letter of support from the county commissioner goes to you.
And you need a letter, so it comes in.
In other words, these are all things you're going to have to fill in.
Yeah. There's some other little blanks in there too, Frank, that I haven't done yet.
I can pick it up, it has a big, like that.
Yeah. But I thought, I should show them what I'm working on.
No, it shouldn't be hard for us to get it done forward.
So, is that a second?
Yeah, I will have it that...
This move to second, that we grant support to the hospital as, for their application for a grant, on our favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. Thank you very much.
As always.
I'll keep writing.
Appreciate it.
Thank you for that, too. Very intelligent woman once said, if you don't know where you're going, any road will get you there.
Thank you.
And ma'am chair, I should remind you that I have the J-Lo's in Helena today at 1:15, so with the roads, it'll leave a little bit early, probably around 11:45 or so, which we had a lunch date at 11:30 anyway.
She's going to a J-Lo's meeting.
Oh.
And so, she's going, will be here this afternoon, and she's going to leave a little bit early because of the roads, not knowing what the roads are. bit early because of the roads, not knowing what the roads are. My husband was in Brown yesterday, huh? And called, it was beautiful here, sun shining, it was clear. I said, "So what's the weather doing?" He told me, "What have you got?" And he said, "It's blizzarding, and the temperature's just dropped." So we knew what was coming. Okay, we've got time enough to do a little bit more mail. You know, I'm going to switch, because this other stuff needs to be a little bolt on.
That is mail that came in that didn't get thrown on the agenda, and as we're adding everything to the agenda anymore, regardless of it being county business, that's what that note is, it's just going to agenda for next week.
Okay. What it is, is inmate access medical insurance program renewal, that's what that is. We have an insurance program so that if one of the inmates would have something very serious and very expensive, we have insurance to cover it.
That envelope, we should address, that is the Tax Appeal Board information, we do not have a Tax Appeal Board secretary at this point. We also need a Safety Commission secretary for our new safety committee that we need to put together. Both the, those things really need to be done before those boards and committees can be pulled together. We talked about it briefly last week, last Wednesday at our meeting, or Thursday, and I'm wondering if we couldn't address that, it is on the agenda.
Okay.
Well, the paperwork is for the Tax Appeal Board, I don't know that we need to go through that, but what we do need to do is appoint a secretary.
Any suggestions?
Nicole Brown was interested, but the state, it would have taken extra time, the state pays a little bit, and it's more of a volunteer position. Nobody's interested in the amount of work for the amount paid. So what I would like to suggest is that we have an employee who's already on the payroll actually pick up that work. If it goes above her thirty-two hours, then they would go ahead and pay her for the work. I have not talked to Nicole about this, that we just keep missing each other, and it maybe should be something that comes from the entire board.
Franklin, thoughts?
And nobody in the Tax Appeal Board will take this job, they're our secretary.
Nobody in the Tax Appeal Board should take this job. That's, they're actually Tax Appeal Board members, and they need a secretary to actually put together the meetings and the paperwork and that kind of thing. That's the structure as per the state.
How's it been done in the past?
There's been, I'd say, a hired secretary.
Oh, okay. So that's what you want to do now?
Mm-hmm.
Should put a, you know, application out there so somebody can apply, or what do you, what's your pleasure?
Well, it doesn't pay very much, be real honest.
And if you'll remember, Franklin, we've done that a couple of times, and nobody's interested. And that's been discussed at these meetings.
And I think it's because it doesn't pay.
Right, right.
So in other words, you want to put different ones in the courthouse that could handle this? Why, maybe that'd be fine. It's the same thing, it'd be almost like ask for applications or somebody, unless you just point somebody out right to do it.
What I would suggest is instead of just appointing, that we as a commission, address Nicole and ask her to please serve as the Tax Appeal Board secretary, with the understanding that if she goes above her thirty-two hours, we will pay her, and if she can do it within her thirty-two hours, that would be great.
What about the Safety Board?
Same thing, only I would suggest that we ask Tammy Rousier to do that, she's also a thirty-two hour employee. Exactly the same thing, address her as a board, request that she take on that secretarial position. If she can do it within her thirty-two hours that she is paid for currently, great. If she goes over the thirty-two hours, then we will pay her for her time.
Is that a motion?
It sure can be, yes.
Yeah, it makes sense to go that route. Yeah, I'll go ahead.
It's moved to second, then, that we've talked to Nicole first regarding the Tax Appeal Board secretary position, and we talked to Tammy Rousier, who are secretary to the Safety Board. All members, all in favor, say aye.
This is that they're going to stay within, in the story of the thirty-two hours, but pay and make sure.
Pose. Motion, Carrie.
And we think that we draft a letter as a commission, and maybe ask those two to come talk to us, maybe on Wednesday, just so that, I don't think we should tell them we've had it passed, again, it needs to be a commission.
I have claims in the amount of nineteen thousand, four hundred and twenty-four dollars.
I will move that we pay those approved claims.
Motion.
It's moved in second, that we pay the approved claims in the amount of nineteen thousand, four hundred and twenty-four dollars. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose the same. Motion, Carrie. And John will be here this afternoon to talk on this hazard mitigation. Yes. I think we're supposed to be at the senior center at eleven thirty?
Yes.
So recess until one thirty?
All right.
Mr. Trump, back to your Tax Appeal Board. Is there actually a board?
There is.
Just all that lacks is a secretary?
Mm-hmm. I think we're charged a member.
I know, last I heard that we had three.
Oh, okay.
And they've all been to training, we're just lacking a secretary.
So then they were, people that have filed, they're well now, since they're, I guess, a full group, they're going to start going back?
Yep.
So it's going to have issues addressed? Very good.
John?
This is, my name's John Wright. It's a little parallel to what you're talking about. Where and who is the tax protest board? Where is that? Is that your board, or is that the commission?
It's the Tax Appeal Board, John.
Tax protest and the Tax Appeal is the same board?
Yes.
Mr. Elsie here. One fifteen.
On the same subject, Madam Chair?
Mm-hmm.
Real quick, mention that there's some state funding that comes in to help cover the cost of that secretary position. Anybody got a figure on that?
Oops. No, it's with the state.
Elsie, come on down, I think you're here to talk about the senior center.
I'm going to steal that back from you. Oops. Good morning, my dear.
Good morning.
How are you?
Good. Well, you want the update on the senior center?
Yes, please.
Okay, our numbers have been increasing, and so has the delivery. And we would like, we're getting bids to get new linoleum put down. Our carpet is a mess, so we want to take all that out and just put linoleum down. So I don't know if we've got the bid from Dennis Shank yet, but there's, Marshall and Helmy is going to come out and give us a bid too. And I guess you've got to working on a new stove for us, which we really appreciate. We'd want that smell propane, to get us that code.
This was for our Pilt meeting on Wednesday, but talked to Mike, and I know he's talked to you as well, the kind of stove that these guys have is not broken. It's not appropriate, though, for the type of work you guys do with it. Those commercial stoves have a pilot light that stays lit, and that's great, as long as it's being used for breakfast, lunch, and dinner seven days a week, which you guys don't do.
Yeah.
And so that's one of the reasons that that stove just isn't working, it's only three years old. So that's the reason Mike brought forward this other stove. It's a starter, as you start the stove, it turns on the pilot, and it has a convection oven and a regular oven, so in the summer that'll save some heat, and in the long run it'll save a lot of power.
It'll save propane, too.
And propane.
Without those powerful tanks.
Here's a picture of the hood, or breakdown of the hood for it.
We don't need a new hood for it, that is actually the safety, and I'm not sure the terminology, so I'm just going to leave it, safety. We have the components with the piping and the stove for a gas range.
You mean electric?
No.
Oh.
Yes.
Electric was in there before, yeah.
Yes, and we need to actually change that to be a gas.
So it takes a snail up?
Right, yes. So that's what that is, it's a safety issue, and one that Fire Marshal is, is strongly in favor of us doing for the safety of our seniors.
And also, we need a new mixer. Our KitchenAid mixer is just about shot. And of course, you buy the mixer, but you have to buy all the attachments separate, I guess. But I see where Costco's got them on sale for two hundred and eighty-some bucks.
That's not too bad.
But then you have to buy the attachments separate, so I don't know, probably a little over three hundred, between three and four hundred bucks.
The one that you have, will the attachments work on a new one?
Well, some of them are just about, we're out of the attachments. The plastic stuff on some of them is pretty well shot. And it was donated to us, I don't know how many years ago. So we're looking into that too. But we do have, I was supposed to say we didn't have any money, but we do have a little bit.
Here's the fourth one, too.
At least you're on a phone.
And then we do get that money, you know, right after about February or March from...
Rocker.
No, from...
Tom Carter.
Yeah. Tom Carter.
Carter, yeah.
Tom Carter.
I couldn't, my brain don't work very good. Anyway, we do have that coming in.
And here's a bid for the flooring of seven thousand, nine hundred and sixty-five dollars.
Is that from Shank?
Yes.
Okay, wait till we get the other bid.
Okay. We can do that, we can hold on.
Yeah, just hold on. Hold on. Seven thousand, what?
Nine sixty-five oh two.
Oh, do you have an extra copy of this?
No, no, I guess you...
I put them in our mailboxes, so you should, but do you want to get a piece of paper or go on actually?
Yeah, I'd like a copy of that.
I, we, I can send you the quote, I just have the one, unless there's one in our mail, but if you want to write that.
I wrote it down here, can I have this?
No. But we can get you a copy.
Okay.
She's honest.
Ann, could you make copies this afternoon?
And I can stop back and pick them up if you want me to, you don't have to.
Hey, thanks.
Seven nine six five oh two. So, do you guys want to know anything else?
Okay.
John?
What has, what has happened with the plans and the demand of the state as well as others, that there be a division petition between the food serving and the game plan? What has happened to that?
Well, we do have pinochle on Wednesdays and Fridays, and once a month, we try to have a picnic and...
No, that's not my question.
No, what do you mean?
My question is, the petition, the division of the two, like all of the other senior citizens supper clubs do have?
Actually, most senior centers don't have any kind of division. Games are played much like you do it after lunch on the same table.
That's not true.
There's, there's no, nothing at the state coming down, at least as far as the agency on aging has, has been advised, and they get their marching orders directly from DPHHS, so you're good to go.
Actually, because I sometimes go around senior citizens, they check up curiosity, and they do have divisions, but that's just what I...
Maybe some do.
Maybe the bigger ones.
Yeah, but, but the ones that we go to, area board, I've never, I've never heard of it. No. Okay. They're going to be assessed by yourself. We have the door ones.
Okay. We have lunch, but there's just...
No, just someone's going to...
Oh, okay.
Elsie, I have a meeting in Helena, so the roads are really early, so I'm out there enjoying it, but I did go this morning, but I'll come back and hire another one.
Okay, now you want to know anything else?
Shoe size.
They do, but they're pretty ass.
Yeah.
What's our menu today?
I want a raise.
Yeah, let's...
Pay double.
Okay, I get some, I'm going to go get my...
So what is on there?
They did tell me a little, that is very good. Yeah. But they don't let us order very much, because, yeah, so if you know anybody that'd like to donate one to us.
You're welcome.
Oh, okay. Oh, this one, this one. Well, this is where they're trying to do.
For sure.
Right.
But in that, it's not really, it's not...
Yeah, I looked up the exact, because I've been... We will be, they did. Yeah, since I've read it, so. Go back and read my memory on it.
Thank you.
That would be great. And then there's some little two, but all of these.
Grand one for the hospital. So, the grand one, which they're applying to, you know, beginning, is your name, what it, the senior, will be held, shall?
No.
There's no way that we can help, so, they say.
I understand you not.
It sounds like, it'd be unfortunate in the hospital, depending on the government money.
How much are the meals over there?
Oh, no, thank you.
Over here?
Yeah.
Actually...
I'll go to bring them.